Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. We are going to get started. I'm sorry we're a few minutes late, but we really appreciate everybody being here tonight. So this board meeting of the Board of Education for January 24th, 2023 is called to order. And before we begin, I just want to give a quick round of applause. We're going to do one now. We're going to do one after you play to the Selwood Middle School Advanced Band. And we are going to have an opportunity to hear them play again in just a few minutes. So let me go through just some opening contextual stuff for tonight's meeting. Any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board of Meetings tab. The meeting is also being streamed live on PPS TV Services website and on Channel 28. It will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. And as I mentioned, good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. Just a few reminders. We do ask that everyone attending the meeting tonight, whether it's members of the public, staff, and ourselves, board members, treat each other with respect. This is something I actually think Portland is really, really good at. We're excited that you've taken time out of your day to get involved in the school district, whether you're here to testify, whether you're here just to observe the proceedings, whether you're here to play for us. Our ability to engage with one another civilly, I think, makes our community stronger. If you do wish to display signs or banners, which we actually love, please remain back in the auditorium foyer behind the seating area and just make sure you're not blocking anyone's view of the proceedings. And for safety reasons, we do need to keep the walkways and aisles clear. And I appreciate everyone trying your hardest to keep the walkways and aisles clear. And in general, we just appreciate if we can all be mindful of the others in the room and remember that we are setting an example tonight for our community's children. With that, I'm super excited as a former band geek throughout my entire PPS career. I'm hoping someone puts me on the triangle tonight. Superintendent, would you like to introduce the next item?
I was in the school orchestra. Good evening, Chair Scott and Directors. Tonight, we're so pleased to have here tonight the Selwood Middle School Advanced Band along with their teacher, Mr. Gabriel Patterson. As you know, part of our Visual and Performing Arts Master Plan is to continue growing and expanding, supporting our school programs so that every student has the opportunity to access music instruction before heading into high school. So I'd love to ask Mr. Patterson if he'd like to introduce the piece they'll be performing this evening.
Thanks so much, Superintendent Guerrero. I'm Gabriel Patterson. This is the Selwood Middle School Advanced Band. We're super excited to have the opportunity to perform for you. We're going to play a piece called Appalachian Morning by Robert Sheldon.
Thank you.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Well, that just became the highlight of my day. Thank you so much to Selwood students for being here with us this evening. Thank you for sharing a little music with us. Since we're talking the arts, I also want to talk about the visual arts programming in our schools. In partnership with the Portland Art Museum, PPS visual arts educators and students studied the museum's visiting exhibition, which featured the art of Frida Kahlo, Diego Rivera, and Mexican modernism. The exhibit explored Mexican modernism movement and took a closer look at the role that art, artists, and their supporters played in the emergence of national identity and creative spirit after the Mexican Revolution ended in 1920. So our visual arts teachers walked students through the exhibition themes of land, home, and family through the traditional Mexican game of Lotería. Students all across the district created their own Lotería art pieces. For those of you that may know, it's sort of the Mexican cultural version of bingo. Students created their own Lotería art pieces to be displayed in one large collaborative exhibition at the museum. The lesson plan associated with these activities, which I think you have a copy of, is rich with an exploration of personal identity. Specific standout pieces from the exhibition were chosen to create the official PPS Lotería deck in front of you, Directors. So we wanted to recognize that January is Board Member Appreciation Month. So thank you to our visual arts teachers and students. We hope you enjoy this gift to recognize your volunteer service with your families and friends for many years to come. So there you have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'm not sure if everyone from the Selwood Band has left, but I actually am a Selwood graduate. And so for all the Selwood students out there, you one day too can sacrifice 50% of your free time in high school and sit on the board like me. So, and also it's just amazing. And I saw, actually, I don't know if she's still here, but Hadley, if you're out there somewhere, I used to babysit you when you were in elementary school. I don't know if you remember, but it's kind of, it's so amazing to see the students that you grew up with like doing stuff like this. And when I get to sit up here, so it was amazing. And I really appreciated everything and you guys making the time to do that. So thank you.
It seems pretty clear that band is a pathway to sitting up here on the dais. So yes. Anyway, thanks again. That was really fantastic. Next up is our Board Leadership Vote. Board Policy 1.20.1010P provides that the board shall elect one of its members as Board Chair and one of its members as Board Vice Chair at the first regular meetings in January and July. As it is our process for board members to be considered for a leadership position, board members and members-elect must notify the current Board Chair by December 1st if they'd like to declare their intent to run for a leadership position. At the December 13th meeting, Vice Chair Hollins declared his interest in continuing in his position of Board Vice Chair. I declared my interest in continuing as Board Chair. No other board members expressed interest in either position, so it will be interesting to see if we have any opposition during the vote. We will begin with the election of the Board Chair. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6638?
So moved.
We're all excited about this. Let's go.
Director Green makes the motion. Director to pass seconds the adoption of Resolution 6638. Is there any board discussion?
Ms. Bradshaw? I want to say thank you to Andrew for being willing to continue to serve. And I think Julia, Amy, Michelle, and I have all served as chair. We know how hard it is. And so appreciate your willingness to serve the board in this way and really appreciate the way you've led with compassion and a sense of being willing to listen during your time. So I'm looking forward to many, many good things and you solving all problems for PPS in the next six months.
Set the bar low. Is there any public comment? Ms. Bradshaw?
No.
Great. The board will now vote on Resolution 6638, election of Chair Scott. It's so weird to read as Board Chairperson. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? And, sorry, Student Representative McMahon?
Yes.
Resolution 6638 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative McMahon voting yes. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6639, election of Vice Chair Hollins as Board Vice Chair?
So moved.
Second.
Director Konstant moves and Director Green seconds the adoption of Resolution 6639. Any board discussion?
Thank you for your service.
And I'm going to say, Garia, I so appreciate you encouraging us to use our voices and to ask critical questions. Now you're not going to be able to get me to shut up.
No, you should not.
Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
We will now vote on Resolution 6639. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Representative McMahon?
Yes.
Resolution 6639 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative McMahon voting yes. All right, thank you for that. And now we will move on to the consent agenda. So we will now vote on the consent agenda. Board members, are there any items that you would like to pull from tonight's consent agenda? Well, we wouldn't, we would need to be subject to a vote, so. All right, do we have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
So Director Green moves and Chair Scott seconds the adoption of the consent agenda. Any board discussion on the consent agenda?
I just want to say thank you to our two new members of the, proposed members of the Bond Accountability Committee and also point out to my fellow board members and the public that we have a couple of other members there retiring, going off. So we do need, we could use up to four more members of the Bond Accountability Committee. So really critical function, critical role. Was great to meet Ryan. He came to our last Facilities and Operations Committee meeting. He'll be great. So everybody, please keep that in mind and think of some good candidates.
Great. Ms. Bradshaw, I believe there is public comment.
I was going to say, Director Konstant, is there a way for folks if they do, are interested in things like serving on the Bond Accountability Committee? What should someone who's sitting out there saying, "I want to be more involved", what steps should they take?
I would say reach out to our fabulous board manager, Roseanne Powell. Go to the board page on our website and she can provide with people with the charter for the Bond Accountability Committee that says what they do and with the steps to apply.
Excellent. Ms. Bradshaw, I believe there is public comment on the consent agenda?
Yes. Robert Foster.
Great, welcome. If you could just state your name and spell your last name and you will have three minutes.
All right.
Thanks for being here.
My name is Bob Foster, F-O-S-T-E-R. I'm a PPS Special Education Bus Driver. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with the board for a second time. It's my understanding that you will be voting to approve funding for a new electronic fence proposal for the PPS transportation bus yards. Prior to your voting, I wanted to give a current update to the latest bus yard conditions. First, I would like to thank Transportation Management for taking our concerns seriously following our presentation in October. In starting to deal with our concerns, the following steps were taken. One, management hired a new security service that monitors the properties between the hours of 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. I believe there has been better visibility to their presence and overall doing a much better job. Two, management started looking into better fencing and gating options that includes an electronic deterrent to better safeguard the bus yards and assets. Unfortunately, though, as the months have passed, the same problems highlighted in October still exist, along with a new one. Catalytic converter theft, although better, is still occurring. Fuel theft and fuel tank damage is still occurring, as well as fuel card theft from the buses. Bus ransacking is still occurring. As mentioned in October, this would equate to your office as being violated. This is very unsettling as you start your day. Unfortunately, the new problem that has started is bus drivers' personal cars are now being vandalized. These incidents have occurred in broad daylight since the yards are wide open from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. This unfortunately has created insurance and repair expenses to be absorbed by the affected PPS bus driver, as well as possibly losing use of their vehicles while being repaired. This may also affect the driver's personal insurance rates to increase as a result of filing a claim. Some of this damage that's happened are smashed windows. They're ransacking their cars also. And the worst one that I know of is someone's truck got their whole steering column damaged as they were, I think they were trying to seal the whole truck. So they were trying to get in the ignition. Since personal cars have been vandalized, transportation has resorted to having some folks on light duty perform drive-by patrols throughout the day to self-police the yards. As I mentioned in my October presentation, security is not in any PPS transportation employee's job description. And although all who perform this duty is told not to engage anyone, it still creates the possibility of a dangerous confrontation. With all that being said, the reason for my being here tonight on behalf of the PPS bus drivers is to encourage you all to vote yes to the electric fence installation. This would go a long way to resolving many of our issues that occur during off-hours. This solution has already been installed at first student or bus contractor's yard with great success. Their vandalism incidence rate has pretty much gone down to zero. A yes vote tonight will hopefully get the fence installed within the next 60 days. The fence, though, does not solve all our problems. Until an electronic gate component can be secured during all hours, during all hours is included, will most vandalism and personal safety concerns be alleviated? Management has advised that this is their next priority and have already made progress by clearing zoning issues that existed and have begun the process of lining up a gate contractor. With any luck, these gates can also be ordered and installed within the same 60-day window. Thank you for your time in helping us in our efforts to create a safer workplace, as well as protecting the district assets. And I will say that the gates are really a big piece of this whole puzzle because even though the electronic fence will have electronic capability on the fence, on the gates at night, with the, with the yards being open all day long, this vandalism, the people's cars and everything has just escalated.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for your testimony.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being here. So the board will now vote on Resolution 6635, 6637, and 6640. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Representative McMahon?
Yes.
Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative McMahon voting yes.
So I just wanted to call out on the consent agenda, the travel piece that we had voted for. We have two teams traveling out and they are using some of the money from the fund that we use for travel expenses. So I just wanted to make sure I highlighted that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent? Or we can also wait until after the testimony, after public comment, so. Why don't we go ahead? I think you have some things to say about the Japanese immersion program.
Sure, why don't, why don't we, Chair Scott? If I could speak to the topic of off-campus field trips, I know that there's been a lot of communication and advocacy received from members of the Mount Tabor Japanese immersion program community regarding this year's research residency trip. Would like to give, with your permission, I'd like to ask Assistant Superintendent Margaret Calvert to offer an update and some clarity. She's been working on this issue and knows it best. So I wanted to give her a moment to speak on this topic.
Good evening, Chair Scott. Directors, Superintendent Guerrero, Student Representative McMahon. Thank you for the opportunity to share some updates with you. Earlier this month, following winter break, we, some of our district staff, including Area Senior Director Kristen McCloskey and myself, met with staff and the principals from both, well, actually from three schools, Mount Tabor, Hosford, and Harriet Tubman Middle School to look at some of their overseas learning opportunities. We went back through and, and, and had discussions about the administrative directors, the administrative directives outlined for off-campus and foreign field trips with the teams. We also asked for a series of additional pieces of information. So we looked at logistics and the possibility of shifting dates so that they could align or be adjacent to spring break and/or the end of the school year. We also looked at specific grade level standards that are addressed during the study, as well as the grade level standards that would be addressed at the school sites while the students were gone. In addition, we asked that there were specific steps to be taken to ensure continuity of learning for all students in the eighth grade in all of the schools and that there would be connections for students making the trip so that there would be continuity, both for the students that are on the trip and the students that were remaining on campus. Ultimately, we also looked at steps to ensure the continuity, as I said, of the curriculum for the entire eighth grade class. After reviewing the responses from the schools and going back and forth with them, we gave them the approval to actually plan the trips. And we're in the midst of doing the final review with all the logistics that are part of that, those trips. So we're into the details of chaperones, background checks, flight attendneries, and the actual processes that we're doing. So as we're going back and forth, we're working now with risk management. So we did the academic look with the teams and upfront. We talked, we looked through a number of things and then we also went back and said, as we go through and look at it with risk management right now. So it's, we're in final review. We're hoping to bring forth the Mount Tabor trip for the February 7th agenda. So you should be getting the details of that shortly. I think that the commitments from all parties involved, the students, excuse me, the staff and the principals, and then our central office staff, was to really look at the, any overseas trips, right? And how, what are the, what's the alignment? And that there's a commitment really to look at some, to bring the trips into alignment with administrative directives, which does include looking at the length of the trips and how many days of school are missed. So there's a commitment to go back and really look at the, the meaning of the, the field trip and the, in the directive around the limit to five school days and thinking about what does that look like? The current trip, we recognize where we were in the planning of it, where the, where the students were, but the commitment is moving forward to bring the trips closer to alignment with that administrative directive.
Did they move the dates?
Some of the dates have been moved for a variety of reasons. And some of it's just travel, right? So we, the, there was a shift for one of the trips from the original dates, but the length of them are fairly commensurate, like the length in and of themselves, we could not adjust. And we couldn't get them to fit closer to, like I said, to like spring break or closer to the end of the school year for this current year. So we looked at things like, you know, end of grading periods, long weekends, things like that, that would, would be less disruptive to the number of days of school.
Do you think the, the issues this year were because this is the restart of the program after several years of not having the program? Or is there something else that made it unique? I mean, so I know during COVID, the trips didn't happen. So I'm just, to re-get back in a system so that we are, they're getting feedback quickly and?
Yes. So I would say that what we've experienced coming out of COVID is there are not many international trips, right? So this is the first year that we really have seen a significant number of international field trips. They're complicated trips to plan and to review. And those take time and sort of coordination and conversation. So we're trying to get our processes aligned and kind of get back into speed. So that was, that's part of what happened in the review. And I would say that just as we went back through and looked at some, there's some slight changes to the administrative directive over time and the, and the policy itself, that we just need to make sure everything is trued up, right? And that is that our actions are reflecting what's intended in those administrative directives and policies.
I have a quick question because I know some of the emails that I've seen was talking about the, the duration. So are we talking about having them go to the whole 10 days that they're asking for? Or are we talking about just the five days?
So they, the, both of the, the trips than the final phases are, they're nine or they are nine or 10 at school days.
So on the next board meeting, we're going to be looking to approve the either nine or 10 days?
Yeah. And the details, there's a lot of, but some of the, some of the pieces around flights and details and some of, some of those pieces are what we've been working through. And then I think the, I will, I don't have it in front of me. So I think that the, the actual final piece for the Mount Tabor trip should be ready tomorrow for a final review. Then I'll sit down with risk management and do that and hopefully get that ready for the board packing on the 7th.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. Okay, we are now going to turn to student and public comment. Before we begin, let me just review a few of the guidelines for public comment. Again, I just want to thank you for being here, attending the meeting, providing your comments. It really does inform us and helps us do our work better. So we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our board office may follow up on any board-related issues that are raised or in public testimony. And we do request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have any additional materials or items you'd like to provide to the board or superintendent, you can email them to publiccomment@pps.net. That's publiccomment@pps.net. And please make sure when you begin your comment that you clearly state and spell your last name. You'll have three minutes to speak and you'll hear the bell go off after three minutes, at which point we would appreciate if you could conclude your comments. Ms. Bradshaw, I know we have some folks signed up for student and public comment. Let's start with our students.
All right. Nikki Hanolsky.
Welcome. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Hello. My name is Nikki Hanolsky, H-A-N-O-L-S-Y. I am in eighth grade at Mount Tabor Middle School, and I am in the Japanese immersion program. I understand that you will be discussing the Japanese research residency at the next school board meeting on Friday, on February 7th, and I wanted to give you some things to think about. I hear that you are worried about how we will be keeping up with our work while in another country. That is a fair thing to worry about, but what you don't understand is we will be doing all the things we are doing in America, just in Japan, in Japanese. During the Japan research residency, we will be doing research studies, conducting interviews, and analyzing data, which we will present in English and in Japanese at the end of the school year. Doing the work in Japanese is even more difficult than in English, so that means it has greater educational value. In Japan, we would learn all the same things we learn here, like math, reading, science, social studies, and even more things, such as money conversion, yen to dollars, and time management, seeing how we are expected to get ourselves to the train station at a certain time. We need to, we needed to know how long it would take to get there and how long we have to spare. In Hiroshima, we would learn world history, such as World War II history. So now you see that this is not a trip, it is actually just one long assignment that just so happens to take place in another country. In Japan, we can use Canvas to help keep track of our work here, and any and all work that is incomplete will be made up when we get back. We learned during virtual school how to keep up with our work even when we weren't in a classroom. I think this residency will help prepare us all for high school success. As you know, over the last few years, there have been a lot of terrible hate crimes against Asian and Asian Americans. You might not know this, but from the start of the pandemic to August 2021, there were over 9,000 hate crimes and incidents of racial discrimination against Asians. Asian hate is still on the rise in the U.S., and going to work in Japan would help us bridge the gaps between the U.S. and Japan. The same goes for the Mandarin and Vietnamese research residencies. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you can see just what this research residency means to us. Please approve our research residency on the February 7th school board meeting.
Thank you.
Quinn Marco.
Hello. My name is Quinn Marco, M-A-R-C-O-U-X. I'm an eighth grader at Mount Tabor Middle School. I'm in the Japanese immersion program, which has been amazing for me as I've been able to learn a language that I would otherwise not know. A big part of the program is understanding the Japanese culture and language. I'm here to tell you about how the research residency has many benefits, and in my opinion, it has more upsides than drawbacks. The research residency is not and will never be just a trip. The research residency offers experiencing the culture and language that we learn in the classroom day by day. For nine years, me and my classmates have been studying the Japanese language and culture without experiencing it in the flesh. Our teachers try so hard to teach us about Japan. However, there's a certain point where to grasp a deeper connection to the culture and language, you have to go there and make those connections friends and lifelong memories. Some people say that the trip would be detrimental to our learning. However, I think that there are so many amazing educational experiences during the trip that goes beyond what we could ever experience in the classroom and frankly, what we could experience inside of the USA. In Japan, we go to school and experience Japanese school. We also go to temples, castles, and other historical sites. These places are so incredible and add so much to our educational journey. From my, from my classmates and my perspective, we have been looking forward to this trip through elementary and middle school as many of us marvel at the opportunity of going to Japan and visiting our sister schools, who used to come to us, to the U.S. every year, but it was halted when the pandemic hit. I hope that you can see the educational benefits of the research residency, and I hope that you will approve our research residency on the February 7th meeting. I also want to thank the board for bringing this topic up.
Thank you for being here.
Rochelle Davis.
Hi. My name is Rochelle Davis, D-A-V-I-S, and I'm a seventh grader at Oakley Green Middle School and a former student of Palencia Elementary School. Thank you for the, for your time this evening. I have a lot of things I need to talk about today. But they all fall into one category: equity. Oakley, a school in the north, does not get the building it needs or the resources. I do not have a lot of time, so here we go. You are building a center for Black excellence, but what are you doing for Black kids and other minorities? Can't you fund excellence in our current buildings? Can you fund us where we're already at? My first point is our portables. I know some of you have seen them. Word is they were to be condemned, but they are still there and falling apart. They are unsafe. My principal, Julie Ryerson, has done all that she can do, changing the repair schedule and getting some attention in December, after I complained. Oakley Green was rushed into reopening when it was not ready for students. Almost a decade later, we still have holes in walls and floors, leaks, falling ceiling tiles, heat issues, and vandalism. Lincoln has new portables that are not being used. Why can't they replace ours? We have a history of rats and have been evacuated twice due to carbon dioxide levels. We are still in the auditorium for health class. Drama has been moved to the cafeteria. There is no, there is not a lot of adequate safe space for learning. As a Haitian immigrant, I walk into these spaces and do not feel like I am seen. We have two new BIPOC PE slash health teachers who are expected to teach in these unhealthy portables, and they probably do not feel welcome or valued either. Are they going to leave too, without a permanent classroom? The eighth graders do not even have a PE teacher. I play PIL basketball, and I get to see a lot of schools in PPS. It is my perception that white kids get better schools. The schools not in the city have cleaner buildings without vandalism, no cracks in ground, and are nice and shiny. They are better taken care of. I have a, I have heard, I have had, heard from a teacher that some classes have not been mopped since August. If Oakley Green is going to host basketball games in the community, we need to pave the outdoor courts and make lines, and then one indoor court is also in bad condition. I toured around a high school board member a couple weeks ago. He mentioned this high schools being remodeled were in better shape than my school. Kids like me deserve better. We are not getting the best learning experience. Administrations and teachers have left and will continue to leave. I have to ask why? Why do the good teachers keep leaving, like most of the sixth grade teachers last year? I feel like there is a reason. Maybe they see the school and Black kids thinking we deserve to be treated better. Teachers and students are shutting down. What is our responsibility to us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can, can you please make sure? Copy of your written testimony? Can you leave that with us so we can all get a copy, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Iris McKeever.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Iris McKeever, M-C-K-E-E-V-E-R. And this is my friend Ursula, and we're both in sixth grade at Creative Science School. For the past two years, we have been nervous about our school moving. Last year, we had the choice to go to a different middle school or stay with CSS. I decided to stay with CSS because I love our community and school, and I have been with CSS since kindergarten. With our move, we might lose some of our CSS teachers and staff. If we lose them, our school won't be the same. Our staff is what makes our school what it is. I worry that there is not enough room for all of us. I worry that our learning space could, will, what it will look like. I heard Bridger had classes in the gym and PE outside. If that happens to us, it will affect our learning. When will we know the full details of the move? Who is in charge of the move, and who should we contact? Thank you.
Thank you.
Melinda Dixon.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Melinda Dixon, D-I-X-O-N. And I'm here to advocate for AP Computer Science classes for all Portland Public High School students. I think it's just, you know, sort of obvious that there's such a great job opportunity out there. I work for a tech company doing training and curriculum design. So I see it firsthand, just all the wonderful opportunities that are out there. Years ago, I was an engineering student, and I was lucky enough to have a coding class in high school. And I saw my friends really struggle with our coding classes in college, and they weren't so hard for me. I know kids today that study engineering also need to be able to be ready for that. And of course, computer science is just an excellent opportunity for all.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Veronica Green.
Okay. My name is Veronica Green, G-R-E-E-N. I am a PPS parent and the lunch lady at Creative Science School. I want everyone to know that CSS never asked to be moved, and we've certainly never wanted to displace any staff, students, or any community. In fact, we've been excited to make new friendships with the Bridger families and staff. When Harrison Park needed a building to house their K-5, we stood back and quietly supported that decision for them to move into our building. The only thing we told the Southeast Guiding Coalition we wanted was for our entire community to stay together. Somehow, though, our community is now being seen as the enemy in this, almost as if we are plotting a hostile takeover of Bridger. PPS seems to be pitting communities against each other with this manufactured crisis. We desperately need guidance and clarity, but nobody knows what's going on. Communication regarding staffing has been an absolute joke. When we ask questions, PPS says it's an HR issue, but when we ask HR, they don't have a clear answer either. When I asked who was HR's boss, I was told it was the superintendent, but he's very hard to get to. And why hasn't anyone been assigned to make this a smooth transition? A smooth transition for Bridger families that we care about and our families? If all of this isn't bad enough, there's the issue of the building. Bridger capacity is 510. We have 420 Creative Science students, and we know of a minimum of 115 Bridger students that will stay, but likely that number is going to be higher. Why are we going to be over capacity yet there are buildings in the district that are under capacity? Now is the time for us to fight for our community, not just teachers, but SEIU and PFSP members as well. As a school community, we've been through so many traumas over the last few years, on top of the trauma of a global pandemic. We need each other. There is a reason that there is always a waitlist for Creative Science, and that reason is because for 36 years, our program has worked. Many of our CSS students were not successful at their neighborhood schools and have found great success and love in our community. They have found a family and a safe space. There is a constant narrative coming from PPS about enrollment. Enrollment is so low. Families are leaving. Well, why is this happening? This mess is a perfect example. PPS doesn't foster community within their schools or amongst their employees, and it's a really bad look. PPS created this train wreck, and it seems that they are just watching us crash and burn. Well, it's time that PPS admits that this is a disaster, takes responsibility, and implements action to make this right for both communities. And I personally am tired of management saying that change is hard, or it'll be fine, it always works out. This change is unnecessary and not working. Every single staff member at CSS, and yes, even the lunch lady custodians, office staff, and pairs have created something special within our community. Why in the world would PPS want to break that up? Do the right thing and allow all CSS staff to make the move with our kids. Do the right thing and give us more FTE to help make this transition work, and also so we can include the Bridger staff. Better yet, give us our own building.
Sam Wilcox.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hello and good evening. My name is Sam Wilcox, W-I-L-C-O-X. And I am the parent of a sixth grader at Creative Science School and a former member of the Southeast Guiding Coalition. Thank you for taking some time to listen to my public comments tonight on transparency, accountability, staffing, after-school care, and overcrowding as they relate to the implementation of enrollment balancing of outer southeast Portland schools. First, it has become abundantly clear that information has been inconsistently shared with the school communities involved. We would like one set of data and facts commuted universally to all of the involved communities. This transparency will allow school communities to focus on actual implementation instead of myriad fact-finding missions and multi-platform information-sharing roadblocks. Second, we would like to know who is in charge of the implementation of these school moves and program changes for the rest of the process going forward. When we have asked for a point of contact in the last few months, we have heard a variety of answers, including human resources, Dr. O, Dr. Franco, and you, the school board. We ask that moving forward, you place someone in charge who has the time and authority to answer questions. This accountability will cut down on the weak responses we are getting from the parties who I just mentioned, as they will no longer be able to pass the buck, claim ignorance, or get back to us. Third, as it relates to myself and my particular school community, Creative Science School, it has become clear that PPS intends to treat CSS's move to Bridger as a merge rather than a move. As such, the staff are being assigned based on a combined seniority list. We ask for an increase of FTE for next year for support staff for both communities. Front office staff, EAs, food service staff, counselors, and other support staff have huge roles in students' sense of belonging. Both communities deserve to have that. This leads to my fourth topic of after-school care. We would like to see these programs moving with the current schools to keep communities as whole as possible during PPS's implementation of enrollment balancing. For example, move CSS's current program to Bridger, Bridgers to Lent, and Harrison Parks to Clark. Finally, as less of requests and more of a series of questions, we are also quite concerned about Bridger being overcrowded next year. What is the plan for that? Have any additional portables been ordered? Is the holiday campus going to be utilized? And lastly, will somebody be sharing with this information, and when? Again, thanks for your time tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Jeb Beatty.
Hi. My name's Jeb Beatty, B-E-A-T-T-Y. And I'm here before you as a parent of a sixth and a third grader at Creative Science School. I'm also a Montevilla resident that's lived two blocks from Bridger for the last 18 years. And I'm also speaking with the perspective of someone whose mother passionately taught elementary school for 35 years. So I'm here tonight because after more than two years of surveys, a guiding coalition, flow analytics, virtual and in-person meetings, there's still a tremendous amount of uncertainty as to how this upcoming school year is going to work for the affected CSS and Bridger schools, and by extension, other affected school communities. We've received nothing more than vague reactionary answers from the district and have watched individual PPS administrators pass off answers to our question to anyone else that is not available to answer them. The most basic examples are clarification of the details of the CSS move to the Bridger building, enrollment numbers, and class sizes, and staffing details. This process of misinformation has led staff, PTA, and communities to decipher details, complex contracts, and planning needs. These best guesses or interpretations of complex information varied between our two schools because they were not explained to us by the district. Whether intentional or not, this has led to hurt feelings, communities at odds with one another, and for me personally, feeling disconnected from my own neighbors because we are receiving vastly different information from our schools about next year. So the big question is, who is in charge? Who is in charge? Who is leading this massive move? Who is the person in charge of explaining how these changes are going to affect our communities, families, and students? Who is in charge of outlining in writing what to expect so we can make the best choices for our families? Promises were made to our community that seemed to be dissolving. Trust is also dissolving, and at the end of the day, we just want to send our children to school knowing what to expect. This is way, way more complicated than it needs to be. Why is that? I ask you, put a project manager in charge. Provide the same information to both communities that is factual and accurate so we can avoid problems and unite our schools and our communities. Answer the hard questions. What happens to the newly combined school of students from both communities if we don't fit into the Bridger building? What is the plan? Will there be more FTEs to staff support positions so students from both schools recognize faces? A person in charge could answer these questions. If they couldn't, they could take them to the accountable PPS people above them to problem solve. At CSS, we are compassionate, community builders, and courageous problem solvers. That is why I'm here tonight, asking these questions and demanding answers now. Our students deserve it. The Bridger students deserve it. All of the students affected by this, all of the staff, all of the families deserve answers. We want answers. It's time to stop deflecting the questions we are asking. So, who is in charge? Thank you for your time.
are working well, they're invisible. You don't know that they're there. You don't know what they're doing, because they're doing their job. And it's tempting to think, because you don't see what's going on, that that means that maybe there's nothing going on, or maybe we don't need to worry about it, maybe there's too much effort or time or money being spent on this. But when you neglect the maintenance of your facilities, then you start to see things fall apart. It's also tempting at that point to say, well, maybe maintenance isn't doing their job. Well, I would say it's the other way around. If you don't see what's going on, that's when maintenance is doing their job. When you do see problems, that means something else is wrong. So, the one thing I wanted you to understand is that the skills that you learn on the job, when you work somewhere for a long period of time, those are invaluable skills, and particularly in a system like this where you have buildings that stay in use for over 100 years, you have components, parts that are hard to find, that aren't made anymore, outside workers can't be efficient, they can't locate these parts, they don't know how to troubleshoot the issues, they don't have the benefit of working alongside people who've been solving these problems for a long time, and they don't have relationships with the school staff, with the people within the system. And we often end up being called in to correct issues from outside workers. So protecting your investment, it's always going to be cheaper than repairing something that fails at the moment that you need it. We spend as much time, I would say, in new schools as we do in old schools. Building a new school doesn't solve the problem of needing maintenance, and I think that currently the district is at risk of falling behind in caring for its facilities. This problem's only going to get more expensive when there are catastrophic failures, risks to safety, property, disruption of education to students, and higher cost to the taxpayers. Demand for skilled workers is rising. It's only going to get harder to find people to do this work, and it's only going to get more expensive to hire people from the outside to do this work. So I'm urging the district to not neglect this important piece of the system and to place the value that it deserves on the people within the maintenance department within this system at Portland Public Schools. Thanks for your time.
Mr. Healy, thank you, Mr. Healy, for being here today. And I just want to note, you've made a really compelling case about the work that you and your colleagues do and how important it is. It's also work that is often classified as administrative or non-classroom expense, but I think you've made a really compelling case about how it does support our kids, it does support our classrooms, and supports our schools. We're going into a really tough budget year, but one of the things that you will continue to hear me say throughout that entire budget process is this artificial division between sort of school costs and central admin, or administrative costs, or, you know, service costs. It really is a false thing. Everything the school district is doing should be in support of our students, and our job as a board is to look and say, are there things that are less important? In which case, we'll need to deprioritize those. But I just want to stress that I really appreciate your testimony, and I'll probably refer back to it throughout our budget process, so thanks for being here tonight. Ms. Bradshaw?
Yes, we have, the next person is virtual, Cody Michelle Hawes.
My name is Cody Hawes, H-A-W-S. I have two scholars at Bridger K-5 and a pre-K kiddo at Vestal who will be attending Creative Sciences at Bridger next year. I want to address some issues regarding the upcoming move/merger of Creative Science School and Bridger that we as parents feel the board need to address immediately to salvage any positive transition for the two communities and get things started on the right foot. First off, as we've heard tonight, there's a lack of clarity and communication from PPS around the upcoming transition, which has caused great deal of confusion and frustration for both schools. We need a direct and swift explanation from PPS and the board about whether this is considered a move or a merger, and then what that explicitly means in terms of staffing decisions and collaborations between our two schools. The most important consideration is how to best meet the needs of all students from both schools while keeping the needs of historically underserved students centered. Eliminating language that implies the Bridger Neighborhood Program is closing or no longer exists is helpful. The neighborhood students still exist and will be at Bridger. For example, and more inclusive language would be CSS is joining Bridger. Transition planning needs to occur with intentionality and include parents, staff, and administration from both schools, and focus on understanding the uniqueness of each community and how to represent that in planning for next year. Please honor each school's strengths rather than frame the relocation as bringing something better to Bridger. Take this as a mutual learning opportunity between two communities. We want PPS to commit to Creative Science at Bridger having three neighborhood classes per grade through K through 5 for the 2023-24 school year. With the current class sizes at both schools, this seems critical and the only way to keep class sizes reasonable. This would also allow for the majority of Bridger's neighborhood teachers to stay on next year and be trained in the constructivist model while having more manageable numbers in their newly mixed classes. Sorry. The Bridger community has been through a lot and is one of the schools most impacted by the rebalancing process. While we welcome CSS to the building and we're ready to adopt their model, it's crucial that our neighborhood students have some consistency next year to ease their transition. Specifically, we would like to have familiar faces for them in the school, staff that knows the school's history and understands the needs of our particular student population. There should be a familiar staff member in the front office, and ideally support staff and some specials teachers that they already know. We want PPS to help figure out how to return to a K-8 with three elementary strands next year and how that will work in the building. Lastly, there must be a deep analysis of the number of students attending Bridger and how much space the school has. As it stands, Bridger is crowded. Based on community estimations, we are concerned there will need to be more space for CSS K-38 at Bridger. Bridger's K-8 just left the school, and kindergarten was able to return because of that move. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That concludes general public comment.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for your comments tonight. Really appreciate it. Next up for public testimony, actually, we have our president of the Portland Association of Teachers, President Angela Benia. Thank you for being with us here tonight, and welcome.
Hello. Thank you for coming. This evening. Let me pull up my comments. All right. So, as always, oh, Happy New Year. Hello. I want to start with kudos. So, kudos to Patty Christensen and the Cub Office, and the PTSAs and administrators at Harriet Tubman, Riggler School, and Scott School, who've supported us as we've been reserving spaces at their sites for community listening sessions. We have another two listening sessions happening this Friday, Friday morning and Friday evening at Riggler and Scott, so we're just really excited that we have been able to collaborate, to have space for our communities to come together. So I just have a few comments. First, on the Southeast Guiding Coalition, oof, right? I just want to first take a moment to remind the board about the dissent sent in by 17 members of the Southeast Guiding Coalition when the report was finalized. They said the Southeast Guiding Coalition was given an incomplete toolkit to do the job, excuse me, set before us, leaving us to create a proposal that forces more upheaval on the most vulnerable students and upholds precisely the inequities in our educational system we have been tasked with repairing. The rationale behind excluding inner southeast schools from the Southeast Guiding Coalition process was stated as limiting the scope so as to reduce the negative impacts of change during the pandemic. But as members of the SEGC and the broader community have repeatedly pointed out, that decision only limits change for a select group of southeast Portland students while increasing the likelihood that those involved in the current process will also face further changes down the road. How does limiting change for the highest SES students in the best-performing schools while placing the burden of balance on the lowest SES students in poorer-performing schools meet the equity goals set forth both in the SEGC charge and the district's RESJ policy? We have yet to hear a rationale for this prioritization. We request that PPS and the board either extend the SEGC process and include inner southeast schools in our work, or have educational leaders give a full rationale that illustrates how the decision to exclude the most privileged students from this enrollment balancing process aligns with their own RESJ policy. And as we reach the final steps of this work, I worry that PPS management has not taken those words to heart. What I've heard from families and educators at Lent, Marysville, Bridger, and Creative Science, including those who've testified today, is that these decisions continue to cause harm. So as PAT president, I signed a letter of agreement that I believed would allow educators at Lent and Bridger to follow their students. And in our contract, it states that if a new school is built and at least 40% of the new school population comes from a specific school, then the educators would be added to the staff list, and they would be chosen based on seniority. We rushed to sign this LOA before winter break so we can give educators time to process and understand their options. And I take responsibility that I misunderstood those numbers and thought the schools were just 1 or 2% below 40%. So I wanted to make sure that they would be able to follow their students. As I've explained to PPS HR, staff, families, educators, that I believe that I made a mistake in signing that LOA, and that I would like to rework that language with educator input, but that has been refused by PPS. So that is part of why we have all received over 150 emails to our inboxes, but I've only received a handful of replies from PPS management. I also think about the families that are not sending emails. I met with Bridger educators and have been in communication and email with their PTA leaders, and they are unsure about the future. They do not know what is next and how to best advocate for their community. They describe feeling like they've lost everything, and their school is closing, right? So, you know, I think about the families at Bridger who are unable to speak out, who don't have access or the opportunity or the language to speak up, the educators who are too overwhelmed or feel too beaten down to speak up. And I wonder how we can provide clear, inconsistent information for Bridger, CSS, Marysville, Harrison Park, Lent. What is the plan, right? When will they know what to expect? Because there's been a lot of information put out, but I don't think it's been centralized in a way that's easy for families and communities to digest. So I just really hope that we can find a solution that can support all communities and make sure that they feel heard, especially knowing that 17 members of the Coalition felt like this was a flawed process. Next, I want to talk about health and safety. We live in a city in a country that's been impacted by gun violence. The conversation has moved from talking about safety and safety at our schools to talking about bringing back SROs and that binary of do we bring them back or not? And I want to make sure that I share some thoughts and concerns around the health and safety of students and staff. When I read about Abby Zwerner being shot by a first grader, a six-year-old in the chest, my heart broke. As more information came out, I received emails and text messages from educators with links to the news articles. Reports from colleagues say that she asked for help. One newspaper explained that the child, quote, "The child who was known to throw furniture and other objects in the classroom once wrote a note to a teacher in which he told her he hated her and wanted to set her on fire to kill her. And this educator saw the signs and reached out for help. Her building administrator said to drop it." Another time, the student managed to block a teacher and other students from leaving their classroom by barricading the doors. They were only freed after the teacher banged on the door and a colleague across the hall managed to get it open. The student was then put on a plan where his family escorted him to school every day. This is a plan that relies heavily on families to move their lives around to support their child, and that plan was not followed the day of the shooting. Too many educators in our district have reached out because they relate to teacher Abby's experience, just short of being shot in their classrooms. And this is not to demonize or criminalize our students. This is to bring to light that the need our students have, to bring to light how ignored our educators feel, and how fatal that choice to ignore us can be. We need more. We need more mental health support, more interventions around behavior. We need the public, our program administrators, and this board to believe us when we say something is not right, this kiddo needs help. We need the personnel to ensure the burden doesn't just land on the overworked and overwhelmed families. So when we talk about safety, we can't ignore the unsafe conditions currently in our schools. We have buildings with unregulated temperatures, mold, and rodent droppings. We have schools where the external doors don't fully close, blinds that don't work, doors that do not lock from the inside. We have schools where educators are being regularly punched, kicked, and threatened. We have schools where educators raise concerns to their building administrators and district administrators about student needs, and the principals have no way to help. Now the district has implemented a new behavior matrix with less accountability, less support, and administrator discretion over who should be taken seriously when we are threatened. When we are bargaining about student support and safety through Article IX, this is what we're talking about. Age is not a reason to discount our lived experiences. It's not okay to ignore these concerns. You need to believe us. Believe us over the administrators, over management. Believe us because our lives are the ones on the line, the lives of our students are the ones on the line. So when we talk about safety, we also can't ignore the unsafe conditions currently, excuse me, outside of our schools, right? We know that this is not an issue that is limited to school buildings. We have to keep the context of our world outside of our school walls in mind. We have gun violence increasing in our city for years now. Schools are just a microcosm of that greater society. Of course, schools are impacted by gun violence. Our city is plagued by gun violence. And we really do, at PAT, appreciate how communicative and swift PPS has been in responding to these incidents of gun violence in our community. PPS administrators, Multnomah County workers, PAT social workers, counselors, and educators have been deployed to support students and staff after each incident. But what I know is that the answer to gun violence happening in our schools is not to harden our schools with SROs and metal detectors, but instead to soften our schools by providing the care and compassion and opportunities that our students need to find alternatives to guns and violence. We soften our schools by providing proactive, consistent, and school-based mental health supports. We soften our schools by providing time and space for educators and students to connect and develop real, genuine relationships. We soften our schools by creating real, restorative practices that hold our community members accountable and help them develop the problem-solving tools that they need to survive our world. Because we're in the business of building up little humans, and we have to make sure that our schools are a place where students can feel safe and connected. Learning will happen when students see themselves as scholars, not potential perpetrators, as musicians and artists, as problem solvers and activists and journalists. We know that the PPS vision aligns with these beliefs, and we look forward to making that vision a reality. Lastly, I want to ask the board to reconsider converting April 11th into a district-wide implicit bias training day. You've heard me come to this body multiple times to discuss the language to these incidents of gun violence in our community. PPS administrators, Multnomah County workers, PAT social workers, counselors, and educators have been deployed to support students and staff after each incident. But what I know is that the answer to gun violence happening in our schools is not to harden our schools with SROs and metal detectors, but instead to soften our schools by providing the care and compassion and opportunities that our students need to find alternatives to guns and violence. We soften our schools by providing proactive, consistent, and school-based mental health supports. We soften our schools by providing time and space for educators and students to connect and develop real, genuine relationships. We soften our schools by creating real restorative practices that hold our community members accountable and help them develop the problem-solving tools that they need to survive our world. Because we're in the business of building up little humans, and we have to make sure that our schools are a place where students can feel safe and connected. Learning will happen when students see themselves as scholars, not potential perpetrators, as musicians and artists, as problem solvers and activists and journalists. We know that the PPS vision aligns with these beliefs, and we look forward to making that vision a reality. Lastly, I want to ask the board to reconsider converting April eleventh into a district-wide implicit bias training day. You've heard me come to this body multiple times to discuss the language we bargained in 2020 about providing educators anti-racism, implicit bias, and culturally responsive practices training. Since then, we've heard a lot of comments from PPS management and members of this board calling our educators racist, saying that these educators are the reason why the district has discipline data that shows our BIPOC students are disproportionately impacted. Yet, when we bargain language to be better educators, that language is not acted upon until we threaten to write a grievance. This school year, PPS management is finally engaging with us around that work, and for that, we are very grateful. So when I was told that HR would go to the board to propose April eleventh as a district-wide implicit bias training day, I was ecstatic, you know, finally. But this excitement was erased when we were informed that the board did not approve the conversion of that student day to a training day. I understand how important student learning is. I'm a teacher. And I also know that we're over the number of days, instructionally, that we need to meet those state standards. And I'm just having a really hard time reconciling the fact that we have this harsh language said at board work sessions where one of our board members said, quote, "When you have a cancer, you got to get rid of the cancer. You don't try to talk to the cancer. You don't try to do professional development around the cancer. You get rid of it." Are we?
I said that.
Yeah.
You can direct it to me directly because I said that.
Yes. So, thank you. Board member Holland said, "When you have a cancer, you got to get rid of the cancer."
Make sure you mention the context around that, too.
Yes. Of course. So here's the context. They were talking about the disproportionate number of referrals that educators were writing for students of color. What I try to explain to educators?
That was a, sorry, that was a disproportionate number of black kids, brown kids getting versus white kids.
Yes. There is a disproportionality in our referral system, absolutely. There is also one thing that we have been bringing up several times, an inconsistency in the develop, in the gathering of data, when over years, as educators, our administrators have told us, "Don't write a referral for that. That's not referable. Don't worry about that." So there is a lack of congruence between what we know is right and what we're told to do in buildings, and also the understanding that referrals are not punishment. Referrals are notification of an issue, of a need, of a concern, so we document it so we can provide that student support. So my question really is, are we the cancer? With the educator shortage that exists, are we saying that diminishing that staff instead of training our staff is the answer? So as an educator, my experience tells me that we don't...
Let me ask that question.
Yes, please.
So this is coming from a historical piece, a historical context, when you have teachers, I'm going to give my own examples, where they, or you have counselors where they're saying, "Well, you're not going to go to college. That's a cancer. Because you shouldn't say that to no child and no youth."
Absolutely.
That goes to teachers who put hands on the students, whereas they shouldn't have. That's a cancer. So let's be clear what we're talking about. I'm not talking about all teachers. I'm talking about the teachers that we know that should not be in schools. We know that, some of the kids know who those teachers are. So let's not BS around, you know, we're looking at the stuff. We're talking about the teachers that you know, I know, that maybe that should not be there. When you have teachers using the N-word in class, we're talking about those type of teachers.
Thank you for clarifying. So I think what's important to point out, and I appreciate your clarification, is that there are processes and systems outlined in our collective bargaining agreement to remove those educators from the classroom. And what we have found at PAT is that those processes are often not followed by our administrators. They, if you collect the data, I can tell you, we have had educators removed from buildings very quickly. Unfortunately...
How quickly is that? Because as a parent, if something happens to my child, I want to know how that process, how long that process takes. So for instance, I had a child who was going to a Portland Public Schools. Teacher put their hands on my child. We went through the process, and the teacher was still there, and every time my daughter went past his class, the trauma kept going. And I know, and I know we followed the process, and the process did not benefit the child. So once again, I ask you, how long is that process to where our kids do not have to endure the harm every single day?
Absolutely. That's awful, and that should not happen to any student. No student should be afraid at school that their educator is going to put hands on them. That should not happen at all.
Again, my question is, how long is the process?
Yeah, I'm pulling up our contract, so I appreciate that. I appreciate your patience. So the process is not outlined by certain days exclusively, right? So there is first the, let me pull up these pages on our contract, so I appreciate your patience. So that's under Article twenty-three in our contract, when it talks about educator rights and just cause, and it talks about discipline and nonrenewal. And it discusses that an investigation takes place and that a determination shall be issued within thirty calendar days of the conclusion of the investigation.
So make sure I understand, so trauma happens to my child, and there is no determination on how long the investigation is supposed to take?
Well, that's up to the administration.
And then after that, it's still another thirty days that something's supposed to happen to the teacher or to the educator after that point. So how long is my child is supposed to endure that harm every day until something happens?
That is a really great question for district administration, because we don't remove staff from buildings. The investigation is not done, hold on, the investigation is not done by PAT, the investigation is not done by educators, the investigation is done by the district. And so when the district is doing the investigation, they then talk to all the folks, investigate, gather the data, they go from that investigation, make a determination, and then they have thirty days to implement that determination. So that is up to the district. I don't control that timeline.
So in the contract, does it states that, for instance, if something like that happened, administrator or the district office can immediately get rid of that teacher?
The, I think Article twenty-three goes on to talk about the process for appeals and arbitration, which is what happens in every single one of those cases.
I will continue to look through that for the appeals information. We definitely want to make sure that everyone has the right to appeal a determination, because as there are some folks who need to be disciplined, there are also some folks who have experienced harm as educators, right? So I can look those numbers up and make sure that gets to you, but the reality is that when harm is done and it violates our students' rights, it violates our oath and our code of ethics as educators, it's the district's responsibility to hold us accountable. And I think it's important to hold educators accountable. I also know that, just like in my classroom, I have to teach people, and I teach students so that I can hold them accountable. Because the expectation is that if we want you to be anti-racist and you came and just got hired, I know that our programs developing educators are not teaching that. Our educator training programs are not teaching us culturally competent practices. They're not teaching us implicit bias training, right? And so when we put that in our contract, we came here saying, you're, we agree, this is a need, and we need to make sure that we're training our staff so students are no longer harmed. And so we look forward to having time to have that happen, and we are happy that this process is starting, but it is still, it has yet to happen. So when we talk about students being harmed every day, how many students were harmed between 2020, when we bargained that language and it was accret upon, and 2023, January twenty-fourth, 2023, where that still hasn't been implemented? I mean, I think it's really important, as PAT leader, at president, I have to represent all of our members, and I am going to push to make sure that we get what we need to make sure that our educators can serve all of our students.
I get that a hundred percent, but as a board member, I'm responsible for our kids and our youth, and that's who I'm trying to make sure that we are here for.
Absolutely.
I understand the teachers, and I love the teachers. They're great, they're great teachers, but I think, and I'm glad you agree with me when we start talking about accountability, because just like with our kids, we try to keep accountable. We need to make sure every single person that are educator that our kids come in contact with needs to be held accountable, too. So I appreciate you in alignment with that.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's why I wanted to bring this conversation and this quote, because I was very concerned to hear that and read that and think, man, I mean, I've been in situations where I've had students who, you know, black boys, who were suspended their last day of kindergarten, which is, what? And then not receiving support, year after year after year. They get to me, fourth grade, I'd be the teacher writing all those referrals, because I'm trying to document the need to ensure that we can provide the services. So I think it's also really important to think about the nuance in our schools, right? Like, the wrong number of a bunch of referrals from an educator doesn't necessarily mean that educator has a bias against a certain type of student or group or race. It could be that that's the last educator that actually has something left in the tank to try to document everything that that student has done so that they can get the help that they need.
I agree with that. So that means we need to look at the educators that pass that kid up
Yep.
to that fourth grade, right? And that's the accountability step I'm talking about. So I think as we're looking at the negotiations, that accountability has to start somewhere. And if it's getting to that fourth grade teacher, that means that kindergarten teacher, first grade teacher, second grade teacher, that teacher had, that kid had, we need to be looking at them then.
And I've had those conversations with those educators, because I'll get those next, that next year kids, and I'm like, what's going on? And I think that's where that level of training is important, because you hear those educators say, well, they're doing their best. Or there's the soft racism, right? The like, it's the lowered expectations racism, and that's why we need that training. Because on the face, it doesn't seem that bad. It's like, oh, I'm being kind. But racism isn't about kind or mean, it's about harm. It's about continued systemic and how me as a member of this system am perpetuating that harm, right? So when we talk about these referrals and we talk about, how do we make a better educational system that's actually going to serve all of our students of color? The question is, how do we ensure that our educators are prepared to do that as well? Because they're the ones there every single day, putting our lives on the line for our kids. And I think it's really important that we make sure that we're providing those supports, right? Because Dr. Russ Green talks about how we do, you know, kids do well if they can, right? Kids do well if they can. No one wakes up and says, "I want to have a bad day today." And if they are not doing well, there's a barrier or a lagging skill. And I expand that to all humans. Humans do well if they can. If they can't, there's a barrier, there's a lagging skill. And as an educator and as part of an education system, my purpose and my goal is to help reduce those barriers, support those skills in development, so that we can get to that place where every little human, big human, is able to do their best in this world.
And I think that that's really vital. I would say that one of the things I was actually going to say to you at the end of your comments today was a little bit of an apology, that I do think we missed the mark. Andrew and I had this conversation later that night. We missed the mark a little bit in our work session on discipline, because we did not talk about teacher safety, and we did not talk about, like, I think about what happened at Cleveland, and it's a very complicated issue. So I think we talked about some really real frustrations and things that we have lived and seen in schools around behavior of educators that is problematic. And also, we know that there are people like teacher Abby who are crying out for help. We have students who are struggling and need more supports. And so how do we handle all of that in a really smart way? I was at the Cleveland PTA meeting, and there were some really awful things said about our children. Like, who decided that it was okay for gang members to go to school? And I think we need to continue to hold as the forefront that all of our students are worth education, all of our students deserve to be educated. And so how do we have this broad conversation about those kinds of ideas that can infect all of us into behaving in ways that do cause increased harm? And so I think we need, we do need to look at school safety, we need to look at discipline data, and we need to find a way forward together between the board and PAT. And I know that I often get frustrated because I feel like no one's taking responsibility and accountability. Sometimes it feels like the board or the district will say, well, it's educators in the classroom every day, they're the ones that aren't delivering the student achievement, they're the ones over referring. And then I feel like the union will say, well, it's the board. The board's the one that's, or the district's the one not investigating the problem teacher in a timely fashion. The board's the one that's not giving us enough support. But if we're always so busy blaming each other for the problems, we're not working together. And so I, I don't know how to heal the sort of toxic culture we have in this district, but I would really like us to find a way forward, because at the end of the day, all of us pointing fingers, blaming each other, and showing up with fear and anger, all we are doing is harming our children.
Absolutely.
I'd like us to move forward.
Absolutely. I really appreciate that, Director Lowry, and I ask all the time, you know, is the way that we're operating effective? You know, we all want to be effective. And I just want to appreciate her for saying that. I think that's true. Yeah, absolutely. Blaming doesn't help find a solution. And I think it's also, it's important to remember that we're in that work every day, and then the goal, all of us, and the goal isn't to try to find someone to blame, but try to find a way forward so that we can solve these problems. And, you know, there is something to be said about personal responsibility, right? Like, we all carry that baggage in, and we need to make sure that we're checking that baggage at the door so we can best serve our kids while still staying human, so we can connect and relate to them. So I look forward to the work that we're going to be doing during bargaining, talking about these issues, and finding ways that we can support our students and our educators, and providing better outcomes for our students so that they can feel safe and supported and cared for at our schools.
President Bonilla, thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the engagement. Appreciate it.
With your permission, Chair, if that concludes public comment, I know that members of our CSS community and Bridger, I just want to express, I really appreciate hearing their testimony this evening, and we knew that implementation of all the dramatic changes in Southeast Guiding Coalition would be challenging. Some implementation aspects have gone smoother, more positively, but clearly not all the details have been worked out, and we're experiencing challenges. But what I heard loud and clear is a desire for clarity and for more comprehensive communication. And there's a whole team of staff working on different aspects of this, and certainly we owe you that, including the questions that are still outstanding, but we should all be on the same page about that. So I was going to initially offer sort of an initial response from members of staff, but also it might be more, I'll defer to you, Chair.
No, I appreciate that, Superintendent. I guess I would, I would say, just, I mean, this is your time again. Thanks for folks coming to testify. It sounds like, I mean, there has been some communication in the community. It sounds like there's going to be more. So I, oh, sorry, I thought, so...
I would just say, I think that the community has asked some really specific questions, and if we can address those tonight and give some concrete, like, response, I think what I'm hearing from all the emails is just this fear and this lack of trust. And I think if we take some ownership and say, "We hear you, and here are some things we have in place," I think that would be helpful for me as a board member to sleep better tonight, if that's a possibility, Superintendent.
I think the best thing would be to know who it is who's going to be on the staff, who's the point, just given that Claire's transition, the deputy superintendent who led the process until she retired, to know exactly who that is and the communicate, you know, having one point of decision-making and information, because...
I know that staff was closely listening, like I was. There were some specific questions, and we'll try to address those where we can. And the reality is that there's staff across a lot of departments who own some piece of this, and ultimately, I'm accountable and in charge, so we don't have a deputy for operations. So we'll do our best to make sure that we create an opportunity to inform the communities involved here.
Great. I think last up, in terms of testimony tonight, we have the Portland Federation of School Professionals, and I believe President Batten is here this evening. Thank you for being here. I hope your ankle or foot is okay.
It's getting there. It's annoying. I don't have time for this. I have a short, prepared statement, but before I read it, I just want to add to the fact that this evening is just so timely. You had people from the Transportation Department, and you voted on getting fencing for them and the vandalism over there. On my way to the school board meeting, I had a member call me, and he works at the Clarendon Pre-K Center, and his catalytic converter had been stolen while he was parked in the school lot today. And sadly, I had to tell him that automobiles aren't covered. And then when I listened to everyone following President Bonilla, is, she's a hard act to follow, and I think of some of the things she brought up in, we too have been hearing about the Southeast Guiding Coalition and have been meeting with our staff at the different schools. One of the things she mentioned that I think we do need to acknowledge is that the entity known as Bridger is closing. known as Bridger is closing. Those people have a real sense of grief and loss. And while there are some great plans coming forward, and I wish it all a good transition, it is a loss for this community to have their little neighborhood school gone. And the staff there is so worried. Their biggest concern is the transition of the little ones and making sure that they feel welcome. And so I think that's an area we all need to really focus on. So that being said, I will start with my little statement. During the course of this school year, other district union leaders and I have come forward, at least monthly, to share the plights of those we represent. They are your employees, as they do their very best to support and teach students returning from the pandemic of the last two years. Everyone who works at this district contributes to the success of a student in some manner: teaching, supporting students with high needs, keeping buildings safe, clean, and heated. Our cafeteria workers fill their tummies with warm food, and our bus drivers carefully transport the most fragile of our students. But we are weary, we are disheartened, and we are in despair. The staffing crisis continues, and I fear it will worsen. In PFSP, we happily work with HR and other departments to welcome and provide resources to our newly hired employees. It's a delight to meet them and to make them feel welcome. Sadly, by the time we get our next monthly new hire departure report, many of those have already left. And those who remain then experience additional exhaustion and overwork. Please make the employees of PPS a priority. We are loyal, we are hardworking, we are big-hearted people. We work on the front lines and in the background to give our students, your students, the best education we can with the resources we are given. Pay our members a living wage. Working one job should be enough. Let our working parents have family time in the evening. Their children are your children, too. Make your mark as leadership of PPS. Provide the most safe, well-staffed, and maintained schools nationally. We have a lot of catching up to do with the rest of the country. Set a new standard. Raise the bar. Be the example. Show care and compassion for our current students and set the standard high for those students to come. Give employees strength and hope by providing learning environments conducive to student success. Pay student-facing staff and support staff respectful wages. Lift the expectations of families. Show them success. Thank you.
Superintendent Guerrero, additional question that, it's just part of the questions we're answering about the Southeast Guiding Coalition tonight, twice it was said that Bridger was closed, and the resolution that we adopted did not close Bridger, and there was no school closure report, which is required by our policy. So this question of, was it a merge, was it a move? But we clearly, the board did not, I mean, we talked about it at the time, but the board did not vote to close Bridger, which is part of, I think, why there is ongoing questions and confusions about how the staffings work. But we did not close it, I think I asked at the time, and even a couple weeks ago, it wasn't that one school is being closed. So I think just in the communication, clarifying that because that seems to be the impression, but that's not what we actually voted for.
That's true, Director Brim Edwards. I've never understood it as a closure of one school community in this case.
Okay, we're going to move on.
It's a no letter over treatment if that's what the problem is.
So we're going to move on to the next part of our agenda.
The board resolution says something different.
Well, then which one is taken? That's what we want, we want to know.
Exactly. That needs to be addressed, but the board resolution did not close a school. There's a whole process that you have to go through that our policy requires when we actually close a school.
Next up is our Student Representatives Report. Student Representative McMahon.
Thank you. I always get so excited when it's a full house, and then, of course, by the time I go, it's never quite as full as when it started. But that's okay. I'm still here. So I just wanted to talk about a couple of visits that I've gotten to do, and I'm so happy that the Oakley student actually stayed because you were one of the three students that showed me and Parker, my deputy student representative, around Oakley Green. It was a great time. If you want to see pictures, they're on our Instagram. I'd love it if you go check it out. But I just want to mirror what was already said. Oakley is in very bad condition, the building, and both me and Parker were surprised by what we saw. I think ultimately, as we move into legislative session again, like, we don't have the money for everything that this district needs. And there's no two ways about that. I mean, Andrew has said time and time again, and I even remember last year saying, you know, harm mitigation, right? Like, we never will have enough money, and it's where can we make the smart investments moving forward? But I think now is more clear than ever, is need increases and the money from our state does not, that it needs to come from somewhere because the need is so desperate. And so I think that's something that our community really needs to bring to the state level because that's where we're going to get the money. And I think that as much as we put all this effort into coming to us, I think that's so great and it's so important. But also, we need to show that same effort when we go to the state because they're the people who can give us the additional money that we need in order to pursue projects like improving Oakley Green. And, I mean, I think you guys, I don't know if you've gotten the opportunity, I was actually invited by a teacher from Oakley Green at a couple board meetings, well, a long time ago at this point, to come and see. And I think it is, it's shocking, and it really is. And I think what she was saying, in comparison with other schools, like, there is this desperate need, and that's something that needs to be shown to the people who have the money or have the purse and can give us the resources that we need. Additionally, last week, last two weeks ago? Oh, dear. It's finals week, people, I don't know. I visited Lincoln. Right now, we're in the midst of people signing up for our student summit. This is a really great opportunity for students to get involved at the district level. We'll have district leaders there. Jonathan Garcia will be there. We'll have, like, a lot of really important staff members at the central office who you can talk to. We've even had some board members say that they'll come and be part of our panel discussion, which, hey, guys, if you want to come, we'd love to have you. So I really appreciate the board members that have made the time for that. So if you're interested, please reach out to your ASB at your high school, and if you're a middle schooler, please reach out to me directly. We unfortunately just don't have enough spaces to invite every school or every student in the district. But if you're really interested, I would love to have students from middle schools represented. My email personally, and Yan, my supervisor, is on the board page, so feel free to contact us. And for those watching tonight, whether you're a teacher, whether you're a parent, if this is something that your student would be interested in attending, please reach out to us. We'd love to try to figure out a way for younger students to be able to make it. And finally, I just want to talk about, obviously, a shooting happened at Cleveland, and I was able to address that in my last student report. However, since then, there was another shooting in front of Franklin. Unfortunately, also, a basketball game, including the Cleveland team, was playing at the time, and it's just...
And Lincoln.
And Lincoln, yes, thank you. And so it is just so hard for all communities that are impacted by it. And I just want to kind of continue what I said before, but, and I really like to see how, you know, a lot of our partners, both at the state level and the local level, are really coming forward to highlight the issue of safety. But as President Bonilla was just talking about, it's not a question, a binary question of, you know, do we need SROs or not, which I think unfortunately is something that's boiled down to, boiled down to certainly in the media. But it's a broader question. I know we're making investments, and I really appreciate the work that Guadalupe and that Jonathan, and specifically have reached out to me in particular in terms of helping, how do we really make sure that students are not getting their voice lost? And I just want to put out a big kudos to the district staff and who have been really vigilant about ensuring that students aren't forgotten. But that as these conversations go forward and as it rolls into a bigger issue, as we do face this pervasive issue of gun violence in our city, in our state, and in this country, that it's looked at as the, like, broader issue that it is, and also how it impacts all individuals, like, parents, community members, you know, the past traumas that it can affect, and certainly to how it can affect teachers who are so many times put in a position where you're just immediately the caregiver of your students, and you don't necessarily get the time to process the things that happen to you individually. Also, I'm so, I'm hoping that everyone is still functioning hopefully better than me during this finals week, so good luck to all the students out there who are in the midst of it. It's tricky, it's terrifying. I know that I've got a couple of grades that are hanging on by a thread. So I look forward to hopefully all the successes that our students will face during this unfortunately brutal time for students, but also that you are taking the time to rest, and if possible, which I know it's not always. And I wish you good luck on your finals, or whether that's just sitting in your classrooms because you're done with them. So, thanks.
Thanks.
And we wish you good luck.
I'm going to need it.
So that's a great segue into the rest of our board meeting, and I did note that we were scheduled to get out of here by eight. And I want to say that Student Representative May was very excited because it's finals week, and she said, can you promise me we get out of here by eight? And I said, yes, well, we have 11 minutes, so I don't think we're going to make eight. But I am going to encourage board members to go quickly, as quickly as we need to, through the next few items. Next up are Board Committee and Conference Reports. You are not compelled, but of course, it is, if there is something to report, it would be interesting to do so, and I will not go down the list. I will just open it up if anybody has anything relevant they want to share.
Intergovernmental Committee is meeting tomorrow at 1:00, and we're going to be following up on the convening that we had last week with the city and county sheriff, multiple stakeholders on gun violence and student safety, among other things, and checking in on our legislative agenda since the session is underway.
Thank you. And actually, I'll just, I was going to wait until the committee reports are done, but I'll just, I will segue just to, I think everyone saw the meeting we had with local jurisdictions, and just to give a little bit of an update, we are going to talk again, you're going to talk at your committee tomorrow about how to follow up on some of those things. But, you know, we did bring together lots of different resources from the city, the county, the district attorney's office, the US Attorney was there, and, you know, it was a really good and frank conversation. And even some information that was not related to schools was, you know, sort of shared in terms of like, oh, that's an interesting program that our staff should follow up on. The immediate things that came out of it for me were making sure that we've got all the systems in place to connect, you know, connect to the city and county, you know, with our at-risk youth. So, you know, our teachers, our students, our teachers, our administrators are often the ones who, and this came up earlier in the testimony, are often the ones who can identify at-risk youth. How do we make sure? And a lot of that already is happening, but how can we make sure that those systems are formalized? Really coordinating summer programming. Again, we did summer programming, the city has some summer programs, the county has some summer programs. How do we pull all those things together to make sure that we're coordinating and, again, hitting the youth that are most impacted, that are most at risk? And then really just having, well, actually, I said, you know, close connection between school staff and some of the Maloney County programs. So the city programs and the Maloney County programs identify those at-risk youth. Those were the really short-term things. There are some longer-term conversations that I think, you know, we're going to need to have as well, but it was a short conversation, but I think a really, a really powerful one, and hopefully sets the tone for continued cooperation moving forward.
May I ask, because I wasn't at the meeting, if, so it sounds really loud, if there's any attention to preventative? I mean, so the programming is really great, it's after the fact. Is there any talk about what we can do earlier on in terms of literacy, wrapping around kids, so we're not putting our efforts into the programming, rather we're preventing this type of violence?
Yeah, no, and that issue came up a lot about, you know, upstream is obviously, you know, much more effective, and I think that got to primarily some of the county programs that are really geared at that, as well as our school district. Obviously, we provide a ton of those wraparound services, so, but yes, that was definitely came up. And, you know, I mean, you know, predictably at the press conference, it was about school resource officers, and I think we're really trying to change the public conversation. That's not unimportant. It's a conversation we should have, it's a conversation we are having. We're having focus groups with our students, with our families, other stakeholders. We're going to talk about whether that's something to do, but it is just one component. And I think your point is that there are so many other things that are potentially going to be much more effective, and if we can broaden that community conversation to talk about all the interventions, I think we'll be better off.
And to that end, I really appreciate the staff for taking a really broad engagement approach and really listening to students, and, you know, this affects everybody, so I really appreciate the intention around the focus groups and hearing from all stakeholders.
In terms of prevention, just to Andrew's point about coordination, you know, we have data that shows that with our summer programming last year, we had, like, no incidents of students who had been involved in summer programming subsequently involved in community violence. Likewise, the city has data that shows that from some of their investments last summer. So it's about activities, but it's also job training, they're investing in more, things like that. So we really need to make sure that we're connected because there are quite a lot of resources being brought to bear on the issue now. We just need to connect the dots a little better.
Great. Any other committee updates or reports for the board?
Policy Committee meeting on Thursday.
Virtual.
Oh. And it's virtual because we are giving up our meeting space to support our building leaders in some work they're doing here at the PESC. So I love that we have that technology.
That's helpful. Okay, before we move on to the calendar, Director Green, did you have anything you wanted to share?
I did, thank you. So last, I believe it was last week in our Facilities and Operations meeting, I made a statement followed by an action about domestic violence and an association with Roosevelt High School and treatment. And when I made that statement and that reaction, I wasn't thinking to the trauma that that could possibly cause for someone else. It came to my intention that that did happen, and my intention cannot be negated by the impact that it was caused. So I'm not going to try to justify it. I simply have to say, I am extremely sorry. I don't want to say I apologize, because what are you apologizing for? And then go ahead and get to it, say you're sorry. So I want to say that I am extremely sorry for the trauma that my words and action or both may have caused, and it is my intention to not cause trauma to anyone, and I have to learn from the mistakes that I have made. And so as I move forward, I have to think about how my actions might cause someone else trauma, and is it worth, is it worth it? And the answer is obviously no, because it's never okay to call someone trauma. Uncomfortability is one thing, trauma is something completely different. And so for that, I am extremely sorry, and I promise that I will do better. I can't say that I'm never going to do it again. I'm just saying that I will get better, and I did it publicly, and so I needed to make the apology publicly because as a person that represents the community, you can't do it in the back, you know, do it in the public and then say I'm sorry in the background. If you did it outside, you get it outside. You get it where you gave it. That's what I was taught. And so I'm sorry.
Great.
You could all learn from you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Director Green. Next item on our agenda tonight is for us to approve the 2324 school year calendar. This is one of the most anticipated votes this year for students, families, and staff. Even in my own household, they're like, who are you approving the calendar? That's for real, a conversation that's happening. We had an opportunity to review the draft at our last work session earlier this month. During that work session, we asked staff to indicate on the front of the school district calendar major religious and cultural holidays in order to avoid scheduling school-wide. Thank you, Director Brim Edwards, for that suggestion.
Director Lowry.
To avoid scheduling school-wide or sponsored efforts on major religious holidays and cultural events, this includes a scheduling of PPS-sponsored events such as field trips, back-to-school nights, et cetera, and staff has included the message on the calendar. With that, do we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6634?
Motion.
Second.
Director Hollins moves, Director Green seconds.
Pass.
And is there, is there any board discussion?
Just got one thing really quickly. I said it at our work session, but I'll say it again since I won't be here. It was relayed to me in that work session when we first looked at this, that no students were directly addressed, or like, asked about the schedule, just something that I think we could potentially try to implement next year, even if it's something that you want to kick to DSE, which is a great way to engage students that we can still do in a timely manner. So I make that suggestion, and I hope that's something that we can take on next year when doing this process.
Thanks. Director Brim Edwards?
Just a short comment, and I do want to thank staff for supporting the students who, and the policy committee for supporting the students who came last year and asked us to have our calendar be more reflective of the diverse, the diversity within our school system. And I think this calendar this year is a great start. You know, in all my 50 years of PPS, I've never seen a calendar that... in all my 50 years of PPS, I've never seen a calendar that starts to reflect really the diversity within our, and the diversity of the celebrations and the cultures within our school system. So I think that's great. I also would ask that we just consider it a first step, because there was, there's other things that we need to consider. And when I say it's a first step, it will be great to see how it gets implemented, what sort of supports we need to give to, to school communities, administrators, central office, all those people who schedule things, so that we can avoid putting school activity, important school activities. At the same time, we have really important community or family celebrations. But I think this is a great first start. So thanks to everybody, and, and really to the students who, and other, and other community members who have raised this issue over the years, that we need to update the calendar to reflect our community better.
Thank you. Any other board discussion? Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
Okay. The board will now vote on Resolution 6634 to approve the 2324 school district calendar. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Representative McMahon?
Yes.
Are there any abstentions? All right, Resolution 6634 is approved by a vote of five to zero, with Student Representative McMahon voting yes. Thanks, everybody. Next up, we have first reading of a policy revision and a policy rescission, revision, rescission. Director Lowry, would you like to introduce the revision-recision item?
Yes, I'm sure you've all read the memos that came along with these policies. So this anti-racist policy basically, yes, we've read them twice. This anti, because we didn't do them last time, because we were long. This anti-racist policy basically just includes volunteers and our partner organizations in, in the work, and that is revision from some state language. So that's the first one. And then the, there's no vote on that. And then the rescission is around presentations by citizens and employees. And again, that just doesn't fit our current practices of how we engage with our employees and the public.
Great. Thank you, Director Lowry. So the policies proposed to be revised and rescinded respectively will be posted on the board website, and the public comment period is a minimum of 21 days. Contact information for public comment will be posted with the policy, and the board expects to hold a second reading of these revised policies on March 7th, 2023. Next, also policies, we have a second reading and approval of a revision of the compulsory enrollment, age, and grade level at entrance policy for .10.020P.
And yes, this policy we discussed at the last meeting, Director Brim Edwards, and you had asked about any public comment. And so we were, we sent out public comment. We didn't receive a great deal on this. There wasn't a lot. The biggest cohort are our tag families that are concerned that this age change will affect those most precocious of learners. I think what the thing we discussed in Policy Committee was the inequitable application of this, and those students took advantage of it. So the Policy Committee recommended sending it to the board for approval.
Excellent. Do we have a motion and second to adopt Resolution 6630 to, as I said, adopt the revised compulsory enrollment?
Motion.
Just to clarify. 6633.
Oh, did I say the wrong thing? Sorry. Resolution 6633. Is there any board discussion about this policy?
I'm making a motion to, to put up the correct one.
Any board discussion? Okay, Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
There is not. Can I request that you note who?
Yes, sorry, Director Green moved, and Director Hollins seconded.
Thank you.
And no public comment, and I'm sorry I went so quickly. Director Brim Edwards, did you have board discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this. But I just want to raise the issue of, there's, just in the staff report, there's discussion about who has access to pre-K programs and who doesn't. But we, we don't actually have that much information, and we don't have information about who has access to full-day, high-quality preschool. And as, and I'm speaking as somebody whose birthday is September 5th, who went, who went to kindergarten as, as a four-year-old. But why not because I went early, but because, I don't know. Number three. I was, I was well-behaved, though, at that age. But the issue of, some of the staff report talks about that this, because we don't, we don't know that every student has access to high-quality, full-day preschool, and the staff report talks a lot about, it's the reason why we're, one of the reasons we're getting away, getting rid of it, is because middle-class white families use that. And I would just say, I, there are going to be cases in which I think we should be careful that just because middle-class white people use it doesn't mean that's something you should get rid of, but maybe it might be that we want to make sure that everybody has access to it. So I just, I felt somewhat uncomfortable with, you know, the logic of, like, we don't, we don't need to have this option, because there's, you know, there's now going to be more full-day preschool. But that actually isn't true yet. So I just want to hold that, because I know people, there was people who, like, hey, we, a different set of circumstances, and we've had this process, but that people can petition in. And I don't think people petitioned in for bad reasons. And we also, because there isn't full-day, high-quality preschool available to everybody, that it, sometimes this is an option. Again, I'm gonna support the policy, but I was somewhat concerned about some of the rationale for, like, here's why we're getting rid of it, because I don't think it's as clear-cut as the rationales that were presented.
Great. Any additional board comment? Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 6633, Resolution to adopt revised compulsory enrollment, age and grade level at entrance. All of those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Representative McMahon?
Yes.
Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6633 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative McMahon voting yes. Next, we're voting on a second reading or approval of recissions of the following policies: 3.40.030P on school demonstrations, little i, little i, 3.30.037P solicitations of community campaigns. Do I have a motion and resolution, motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6628?
Second.
Director Hollins moves, and Director to pass seconds. Is there any board discussion? Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
And again, I would just say that as the Policy Committee brought these forward, these are, again, things that aren't in, aren't in our practice anymore, until they're outdated policies that don't follow how we do this mess.
And we're just cleaning up the books.
Yep.
Appreciate that. The board will now vote on Resolution 6628 to rescind board policies. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
I forgot to vote yes.
It's finals week, Amy. It's okay.
Student Representative McMahon, please indicate your votes. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6628 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative McMahon voting yes. Are there any other items or business for the board tonight? 8:06, Representative McMahon. The next regular meeting of the board will be held on February 7th, and we are adjourned.